Welcome in-person guests and welcome Zoom guests and welcome to City Council and Milton staff to in-person meetings. I'll call the City of Milton Common Council Combination Virtual and In-Person Meeting to order on Tuesday, July 6th, 2021 at 6:04 PM. And can you confirm appropriate meeting notice, please?
Meeting notice was posted at Dave's Hardware, Wiggly Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? We have an agenda and we are excited to be here. You guys are great. Awesome. Okay. Let of allegiance. Dan, do you want to lead us? Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So we have I can hear the feedback. We have two individuals signed up for public comments and I will give you the option if you would like to speak now or wait until the presentation is over. So what's your preference?
I'd like to speak after the presentation.
And I'll speak before, if you don't like me.
If the spirit moves, yeah, got it. Okay. Thanks.
Can I use that?
All right. Approval of Common Council Meeting Minutes from June 29th, 2021. Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any deletions or corrections or additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. You can raise your hand. Oh yeah, I may not see you if you don't. All right, so I think you're all here for the same reason. We all, we all care about our communities. We all care about fire suppression and medical paramedic services. And the City of Milton had asked Wisconsin Policy Forum to look at two options, the viability of those options, some details about that regarding the City of Milton and the direction that they may or may not go as far as having a standalone City of Milton station or having some version of a combined services with the City of Janesville or other entities. So without any further comment, I would like to introduce you to Rob from Wisconsin Policy Forum. And he and his partner have worked very hard with us to put together this presentation. I'm sure there are no surprises in it for anyone, but welcome. And even if you have not signed up for public comments and after hearing the presentation you would like to say something, just let us know and we can get you the sign-in sheet. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Welch. Can everybody hear me okay? Great. Members of council, pleased to see all of you and honored to be here at your first in-person meeting in quite some time. So that's a special thrill. Yeah, again, we are very pleased to have been able to work with city administration, with folks from Janesville to put together this report. I know all of you have seen the report. What I plan to do this evening is take no more than 15 to 17 minutes or so of your time just to go through the highlights, just to make sure that you could hear it from me. Maybe some of the nuances that didn't come out quite as clearly in the report. So I'm going to run through a bunch of PowerPoint slides. And for members of the audience, this will also give you an opportunity to just get a snapshot of what we found. Also, Mayor Welch mentioned a member of our staff, one of our researchers, David Amenta, was actually the lead researcher on this project. She's out there in Zoom land. So if you throw any difficult questions my way, I'll just turn them over to her to answer. But she'll, she's standing by, ready to do that. So let me get right into this and let me just get started with just some very brief background on the Wisconsin Policy Forum. We have been around for more than a century, since 1913. The former Public Policy Forum, which was located in Milwaukee, in 2018 merged with the former Wisconsin Taxpayers Alliance, which was Madison-based. That's when we became the Wisconsin Policy Forum. But both organizations, WIS-TAX was created in 1932. As I said, the Public Policy Forum under a different name, created in 1913. What both organizations have been committed to throughout their existence is fiercely nonpartisan, objective policy research that really is designed to help all of you and to help the citizens of the state. We don't have any access to rhyme. We don't have any skin in the game. We are seen as an objective source of information. There are certain issues that we dive into on our own because we think they're of great importance to the state. And we think that our objectivity and nonpartisanship might benefit the debate. Also, our emphasis on data-driven decision-making. In other cases, you are far from the first local government that just came to us and said, "Look, we'd like an independent set of eyes to take a look at some issues that we're looking at because we think that that may have merit." So on this slide, you can see what we're all about. We are, by the way, nonpartisan, citizen-led. And so again, there's no profit motive for us either in terms of doing these types of analyses. Increasingly, we have had a book of business dealing with local government service sharing and in particular in the areas of fire and emergency medical services. On this slide, which is a little difficult for you to see, it's a report covers a variety of service sharing studies that we have done for communities. We started out largely in Southeast Wisconsin, so through Milwaukee County, Racine County and Greater Racine is where we have done some work. We've looked at, again, fire EMS, we've looked at public safety dispatch, we've looked at public health. We've looked at parks and recreation. Most recently, these are four report covers. All of these four reports have come out within the past six months or so. One was in neighboring Jefferson County where we did a study on possible options. And that's our style. We don't come in and tell people what to do. We lay out the policy options and the pros and cons as we see them. So we did such a report looking at emergency medical services provision in Jefferson County. We did fire and EMS studies for both Frost and Ozaki counties. And recently, we were asked to come in by the Union Grove Yorkville Fire Department in Racine County, just to take a look, in many respects, what we did for you. That's a small department with a service area about the size of the service area that the Milton Fire Department is covering, that is increasingly stretched financially by the need to grapple with a shortage of paid-on call and paid-on premises staff that just doesn't know, quite frankly, where to go next. And so they brought us in to take a look at other departments with similar-sized service areas, similar demographics. Coincidentally, we looked at your department as a comparable for Union Grove Yorkville and just laid out some data that will hopefully aid them in their decision-making process. So that's a little bit about us. The mayor actually took my thunder away from this slide. Already told you the scope. It was really to look at the two options that I know this council has already discussed, that your staff did a great job preparing some very early and high-level fiscal estimates. So our job here was just to review that, to also incorporate some additional information that either we uncovered or that you had uncovered yourselves since the original high-level fiscal analysis was done and to, again, provide an independent assessment of that analysis. The other thing that we were asked to do was just look at the subject of cost allocation. We know that it is a very open-ended question right now, what the towns that are served by the department are going to do. But in the event that you all stay together in some way, shape or form, we were asked to look at what cost allocation options, other than the one that you are currently using, what those might look like for a variety of different options. And so, and then finally, given that we have actively looked at fire and EMS services in at least nine counties now throughout the state, just to share with you some of the insights that we might have about your situation as you're currently facing. So the starting point for any consideration of what to do next has to be a common understanding of where you stand today. This slide and this table is in the report, shows your current staffing level and the salary dollars that you are spending per your 2021 budget. What is of note here, of course, part-time chief, who you shared with the Janesville Department, the use of three FTE firefighters slash paramedics, that is to serve a goal of having one at the station at all times. And then, of course, you fill in with part-time paid-on premises staff to try to have between three and five individuals at the station for when a call comes in at any given time. We looked at sort of the averaging based on just your budgeted numbers and it came up about, you know, the average at any typical time, about 4.29 FTEs. I would point out to you that not all communities your size are able to achieve that level of service. There are several who are calling in all of their responders for any call. There are some that certainly aren't using paid-on premises. They're using exclusively paid-on call. And that obviously has an impact on response times to the extent that you have to call those folks into the station in order to respond. So again, the way you are giving it certainly has some benefits. You are able to generate a response pretty quickly. You are able, when you have that five-person level of staffing, to send out an engine and an ambulance at one time when circumstances merit that. And you're able to keep your costs down because of your extensive use of part-time staff who may not receive fringe benefits. The rub here, and I know I don't have time to give you, is that maintaining that roster of part-time employees is an increasingly difficult thing for you to do. You are far from alone. We are seeing this throughout the entire state. Communities that for many, many years have really benefited from a part-time model, which makes so much sense depending on your call volumes. But when you have relatively, you know, small call volumes to not have to pay full-time staff, makes a lot of fiscal sense. The question is whether you're going to maintain those rosters of paid-on call or in your case, also paid-on premises employees. And so that's where those are. Budgetarily, this is your current budget for 2021. The expenditure budget about $1.35 million. Again, these are numbers that are familiar to most of you. Of note, that's expenditures, you then net out the ambulance and other revenues, mostly ambulance revenues, about a quarter of a million dollars. The contributions that you are receiving from the towns that are served by Milton Fire Department of about $682,000. And so the net city of Milton costs in the 2021 budget, about $415,000, which adds up to about $74.32 per gallon. So that is your current budget. Now let's look at the options that had been put before you, given that obviously you are at a crossroads, as the title of our report suggests. We're not sure what the towns are going to do. There are some questions about your relationship with the Janesville Fire Department, the extent to which you're going to be able to continue to rely on that department if you stay the way you are for the automatic aid or anything that you currently have. So I want to go through those options, a few very, very important aspects. While we did rough numbers and did a pretty comprehensive fiscal analysis, I would still deem this to be relatively high-level. I think these numbers are a really good starting point to give you an idea of what these two options, the standalone City of Milton Department and a scenario under which the City of Milton contracts for service from the Janesville Fire Department. I think these numbers are pretty much in the ballpark. But there are some questions that we wouldn't get at. So again, you can't take this off the shelf and say this is what it's supposed to be. Capital assets. We had to make some assumptions. Obviously, it's unclear what would happen in terms of the apparatus and the equipment if the City of Milton and Milton had those separate ways. We made some assumptions on the capital side, on the equipment side, in terms of what the City of Milton would be versus the towns of Milton. That would still happen in the future. We did not look at the possible need for station upgrades. And especially to the extent that you are going to rely on full-time staff, it's like sleeping quarters are going to come into play. And so there may be some station upgrade costs or you did not open up those station upgrade costs. If you stayed safe somehow. But again, that's not a factor in, and that's something that would have to be back there. Finally, what we did was sort of what year one would look like. Again, we feel pretty good about those numbers. But years two through whenever are going to work out. Pay scales are going to change. Union contracts are going to change. So we, again, can give you a pretty good guess about year one, but we really did not cover what's going to happen after that. So those are just some very important parts of all these. Let's start with the Milton standalone option, which again, city staff laid out for you a few months ago. We took another look. We did not make too many changes, but let me just note a couple that we did make. In the original estimate that Dan and Al and the staff prepared, there was an assumption that you would need essentially, the goal was to go up from one to two full-time staff at that station at any given time and to still supplement that with paid-on premise. We find no fault at all with that assumption. The only thing that we tweaked was to say, "Look, to really have two people there at all times, you're going to need one extra staff person to cover for time off, vacation, paid leave, FMLA, et cetera." So as you can see, we put into the financial analysis that we did having four firefighters slash paramedics as opposed to three. And then we also budgeted for the equivalent of one FTE of paid-on call staff. You would still need to maintain some use of paid-on call staffing for structure fires for times when there might be two simultaneous calls. And so you would clearly need more than one body. Still need a roster of individuals, but for budgeting purposes, we said one paid-on call FTE. We also were able to lower a little bit the number of paid-on premises as a result of that. So that's what the comparison was. When you budget that, you know, and so this doesn't compare it to the original estimates you saw, but this compares our assessment, fiscal assessment of that option with what you are currently spending. And remarkably, I mean, the cost came out almost exact. While again, so FTEs are actually down because you're really going down from that average of 4.29 to three. Now that's justified in part by the fact that your calls for service really are cut just about in half because you only would be serving the City of Milton and not the surrounding towns. While we, while this option calls for more full-time staff, again, the fact that total FTEs go down sort of offsets that. So in terms of the total operating budget, virtually identical. So that's the good news. The bad news is that because the call volume is cut in half, you're also not realizing the ambulance revenue that you are currently realizing. You're losing about half of that. So that number goes down, resulting in a higher net cost of 1.2 million versus roughly 1.1 million. And then finally, of course, you would lose the contributions from the towns. So again, while the, the starting expenditure cost is roughly the same, the loss of that revenue means that your cost for the City of Milton would be about 1.2 million or about three times the $415,000 that you are spending or budgeted to spend in 2021. Just a few considerations about this option. And by no means are we suggesting you shouldn't go here. But a couple of considerations. While indeed this model would call for an increase of full-time responders, there would still be a heavy reliance on part-time staff, both paid-on premises and paid-on call. And given the problems that you are currently experiencing, that could be a problem obviously going forward. Number two, we don't know for sure what Janesville is going to do. Chief Rhodes, who we consulted throughout, who is extremely cooperative and great to work with, just said, "Look, there's a chance. We are looking at possibly needing to eliminate our automatic aid agreement because of the agreements, because of the challenges that we are facing." If that were to happen, that could have an impact on your ability to respond as a standalone department. Now clearly, Navis would still be in place. But without that automatic aid, it could affect response times when there are multiple calls coming in. Because you have, you would have fewer calls for service. That would certainly be less frequent, but that's something to just keep in mind. Finally, we also considered, gee, in light of that reduced call volume, is there maybe a less expensive option? Or maybe the goal is just to have two people at that station at all times? Because we've seen other communities with call volumes in your vicinity that have operated that way. So we looked at that briefly. We costed it out. It could save you about $350,000. But that approach would give you a much heavier reliance on that part-time staffing and even heavier reliance on your neighboring departments. And so from a service-level perspective, we can't say that would be a good idea. We are not, I have no background whatsoever in fire and rescue. And so again, we don't feel like we are equipped to really weigh in on these service-level issues. But certainly, it would be something that you would want to consider if you ever thought that you wanted to pursue that type of approach. So the next option that we looked at was the so-called Janesville merger option, where essentially, City Milton would no longer run its own fire department. Instead, you would contract for service with the City of Janesville. And essentially, the City of Janesville would staff your station. So whether it's a new station in Milton or the existing station or an operated station, we didn't get into that, but clearly, under the scenario, there would still be a station in Milton. The difference is that you would contract to have somebody else staff that station. We took a look at the option that your staff laid out to you in terms of staffing. And really, they got this through discussions with the City of Janesville. We thought that in order, so one big difference here is that now you would be talking about having three full-time staff at that station at all times. So it would still be three, not the four to five that you currently see because again, the call volume would be reduced. But in this case, instead of having two of the three be full-time career staff because you are now relying on the Janesville Department and they use exclusively full-time career staff, it would be three full-timers. Well, to actually have six firefighter paramedics and three lieutenants to cover three shifts of three, you would actually need more staff than that again because of the time off issue. So we think more realistically, and this wouldn't be you, this would be Janesville, would need seven and a half firefighter FTEs to cover this. Now, quite frankly, that's Janesville's issue. They gave you what they deemed to be a contractual amount. And so essentially, they were saying, "We'll cover that." So we just wanted to show it on paper. But end of the day, when you look at the fiscal, we just used the number that they gave you. Their number was $1,67826. We're showing it a little differently on this chart because we just took the money out of fire department expenses to make up for the fact that the staffing would go up. But essentially, in this one, you didn't necessarily need us to do a fiscal assessment because the dollars are whatever Janesville says the dollars are. Obviously, subject to negotiation with you. But we just wanted you to know that they probably need a higher level of staff. And one benefit of contracting with a larger department is they're going to be able to cover that time off with existing personnel from their department. So that's why it's sort of a wash. But I think what this also shows is that from our perspective, the amount of money that they are seeking is not an unreasonable amount, given the fact that they would have to cover roughly seven and a half staff instead of six in the firefighter side. So you can see the comparison to the other option. Essentially, there's a savings of about $150,000 for this option when compared to your Milton standalone option. Some considerations and observations. Again, the same three-person station shifts, but here exclusively using career responders. So this concern about maintaining a roster of part-time staff disappears entirely. When there are simultaneous calls, when there's a structure fire which demands 12 or 14 or 16 responders, you have the full capacity of the Janesville Fire Department that is making that response. So that's a benefit. Other benefits of a larger department include the fact that, you know, right now when you have two different departments responding and they have slightly different types of training and levels of training, you know, coordination may not be quite as good at the scene. You would have deeper command resources, opportunity to retain staff. So there are lots of benefits to being served by a larger department. The one huge drawback, which we can't quantify for you in terms of dollar terms or any terms, is that of course, you would lose your local control over your own fire department. You'd have some say, given that it's a contractual agreement that you would need to negotiate. But obviously, that's something that may be very important to you that no longer would you have complete control over your own fire department. Finally, we looked at a third option. And we decided to do this. You didn't necessarily ask us to look at this option. But we thought that the best way to illustrate for you how cost allocation might look would be to Model A scenario. I'm probably sounding Pollyannaish here, where everybody stays together. All of the towns decide that they want to continue to work with the City of Milton to secure fire and EMS. And the path that they, that all of you collectively decide to take is that all of you contract with the Janesville Department for service. So again, the Milton Fire Department would go away, but there would still be a station in Milton and that station would be staffed by the Janesville Fire Department. The big difference here is that when we modeled this, we said five people at the station at all times. So a very robust level of service, five full-time people. That's justified in part by the fact that the service area, again, would grow to the existing service area. But another really important key, which again, is important to us just because we're about intergovernmental and regional cooperation, is that there'd really be a benefit for the City of Janesville here as well. Hypothetically, if you staffed your station to that level, that station could also extend coverage into the northern part of the city of Janesville. And hypothetically, we don't know where they're at, but it could either delay or even eliminate the need for them to consider building a new station, which as I understand, is under consideration. So a much higher level of staffing, but a much broader regional benefit here. Budgetarily, of course, because of that higher level of staffing, much more expensive. About $1.9 million would be the net cost. Again, revenues, those are retained, just like in the other merger option. Those ambulance revenues, because it's the Janesville Department providing the service, they retain the ambulance revenue. So you have no revenue offset in terms of your cost. And so a net cost of about 1.9 million, only almost twice as much as the cost of the current department. That said, now let's look at how that cost must, might be allocated. And what we did, and we have done work looking at the North Shore Fire Department, which is the northern Milwaukee County suburbs, not only a regional and a state model for a successful consolidated department, but is frequently held up as a national model. I'm not saying that this is the only or the perfect cost allocation methodology, but it has worked well for them for almost 25 years now, which is to take population, calls for service and assess value, actually equalize value, I should say, and weigh those equally and come up with weighted percentages and applying that to the cost of the department. So if you were to do that with your towns, what we're showing on this slide and in the report is the percentage of the City of Milton, the town of Milton and the other towns. You can see, right now, you are using equalized value to allocate that cost. So you can see how that breaks down. If instead you were to use all of these three factors, you may not like this, your percentage of the cost would go up a little bit from 39 to 47. The town of Milton's would go down a bit from 31 to 29 and the other towns would go down from 30 to 24. If you were to then apply that to that $1.9 million cost for this model, you can see how it breaks up. City Milton, 910,000. Town of Milton, about 556, 459 or so. For the other towns, you can see how that compares to the current cost. So now bringing me back to your perspective. You know, despite that fact that this is a more costly option because you're now bringing in a sharing of the cost with the towns, of the three, this would be the least costly for you. That $910,000 is again about $157,000 less than the other merger option where you just merge yourself or contract yourself with Janesville and about $300,000 less than the standalone option. You know, the town of Milton and the other towns would receive the same benefits that you would under the previous you would under the previous option of being part of a larger department. For the Town of Milton, now they would lose some of the control, because they obviously have equal control over the current department with you folks. You know, that five-person staffing would be significant, and again, allow that station to send out both an ambulance and an engine simultaneously, that would bring out benefits to the region, including benefits to the City of Janesville. So from where we sit, which quite clearly, only we sit here, this would look to be a pretty good option of, of, of the options that we consider. And that just leads me to my conclusion. So, you know, first and foremost, in terms of what you asked us to do, those original cost estimates certainly were reasonable, although they were a bit understated with regard to staffing. And actually, I failed to mention on my slides, we also came up with some very rough capital estimates, very rough, because we don't know how equipment and, and apparatus would be distributed. But that's another thing to understand. I've been, the, the numbers that I've been citing are on the operating side. We estimate that depending on how you do it, and whether you would have to bond for new apparatus, or whether City of Janesville would have to add apparatus for any of these options, probably an additional $150,000 to $250,000 of cost annually on the capital side. For that standalone option, we assumed you'd immediately have to, have to spend about $2.1 million for some new apparatus, if you bonded for that, a 15-year debt, that would come out to $180,000 a year. We also say, you would probably want to set up a sinking fund for other capital needs, but this is very high level. But again, that's also something to keep in mind. We, we really did not spend a lot of time on capital. Which leads me to my next point, again, these are only informed estimates, I've already talked to you about the uncertainties. End of the day, that Milton standalone option retains your independence, but is the costliest and arguably the least effective. That city-only merger option would be more advantageous programmatically, and cost, from a cost perspective. Though again, if those Janesville firefighter costs go, go up, which they are going to under the current union contract, those, those out-year costs would grow, and so it would potentially diminish those dollar savings going forward, though you also don't know what's going to happen to your cost going forward as well, if you, if you stay as a standalone. Finally, that regional merger appears to be the best solution, the question is, is it all viable, and we obviously can't speak to that. So, I will conclude there, and you'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, Inga, do you have anybody on Zoom that has a question? Why is...
Does anyone on the Zoom call have any questions they want to bring forward at this I'm not hearing anyone right now.
Right, did you want to hear any questions, or you just had comments? Just for a question time, not taking away anybody's comment.
Yeah, this is all.
Okay, okay. All right, council, questions?
This is Larry.
Go ahead, Larry.
I'm curious about North Shore, because this is kind of where my head has been at for quite a while, and you, you commented that they've been doing it effectively for 25 years in, in that model, right? And have they had any, I guess the question I have is, is there any downside to that model, from, from their perspective, from your perspective?
So I can, I can comment both as the head of the Wisconsin Policy Forum, but also as a resident of Bayside, Wisconsin, which is a community about your size, about 4,500 people. And I often think, like, what would it be like if, if Bayside was trying to do its own fire services as it wants to? So, a couple ways I respond. Number one, you know, there have been bumps in the road. In fact, I, I was called in four years ago to mediate a dispute, Brown Deer and River Hills, two of the seven communities, were not happy with the funding program, and were threatening to pull out. And so, we did a long process, and crunched a lot of numbers, and very, made very minor tweaks to the cost allocation. It's still generally, generally 33, 33, 33. So it has stood the test of time, does it mean that it varies points of time? For those of you who are familiar with that area at all, Glendale is the home of Bayshore Mall, and Bayshore Mall got developed during the last 25 years, and there was a lot of dissonance about, well, look, how come Glendale, which is getting all the, the economic benefit of Bayshore, and now is really, you know, the calls for service are, are growing, you know, is this still fair? Well, again, because calls for service is one of the three planks, it, it, it worked out. I mean, people crunched the numbers, and, and again, that's, that's very small tweaks that were made. So, not always easy, but, but has stood the test of time. But, but really, from a service level perspective, when I think about the fact that, you know, I as a resident of Bayside, and I'm not, believe me, I'm not here to do an advertising for the North Shore Fire Department, but, you know, I, I live in a, in a 4,500-person community, and my fire EMS is being provided by a, a department that has a, 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 a level two rating under the insurance ratings, with a scale of one to 10, there are very, very few ones, and not that many twos, very high-level of service, outstanding response times, I mean, if, if I need a paramedic, I'm going to have one in five minutes or less. And so that's something that communities in, you know, in, in the size of Bayside, you know, can't get on their own. So, I, I think it's a very effective model that way, and I can show you the slide, which I didn't bring, I usually do, is that in 2015, on the 20-year anniversary, we were called in to just do an analysis and say, you know, can, can we determine, you know, the benefits of having done this, or the, you know, the, the cons of having done this? We found that if, if, if the seven communities had continued to provide their own fire and rescue service 20 years later, just escalating their costs based on CPI, and we all know fire and EMS gets higher than CPI, they collectively would have been spending about 2.8, oh, and also, in order to achieve a relatively similar level of service as Glendale, which is the highest level of service of the seven parks, you put all that together, they collectively would have been spending about $2.8 million more in 2015 than they were actually spending to support the department.
Did you also do some work in La Crosse in that area?
In La Crosse? Yes, we just completed a study late last year, December.
And wasn't that with one of, a smaller municipality about the size of ours? That was part of that collaboration?
Yes, so we looked at the, we looked at Monalaska, community above 14,000. Village of Holman is the other one that was really struggling like you, and that's a great example of a department that was not able to, to have full-time people at the station. They were relying on paid-on-call. Very candidly, the other area departments were getting very aggravated, because Holman is a growing area, relying more and more heavily on other communities, mutual aid and so forth. So they are actively engaged in discussions with La Crosse. Likely to happen, but I, it, it is not out yet.
Thank you, I had read a little bit about that, but wasn't, didn't know if you had brought any information. Any other questions?
Can you speak to disparities between the staffing costs for the standalone and the merged in terms of, the point that I'm getting at is retention of staff? We've got a regional labor market, and if Janesville is paying X for firefighters EMS, it's hard to recruit or retain if the city is paying less. Talk a little bit about how you factored that into your calculations.
Yep. So, again, we, we did mention the point, and it's a, it's a great point. For, for year one, we did, we assumed, you know, just in looking at the cost, that if you go forward and, and have your own City of Milton department, that essentially, you're, you're going to pay what you're paying today. We did note that, you know, if instead, you go with La Crosse, and even if their initial, that initial $1,67,000 number incorporates what they're paying their firefighters today, we know they have a multi-year union contract, and that's going up. And so while there's a spread there, that spread could narrow. But you raised a very pertinent point, which is, could you really continue to pay your firefighters what you're paying them indefinitely if, if Janesville is going up? And again, we didn't study that, but I think it's certainly a question. So, in, in all likelihood, your pay scales would need to go up as well, and so that, that spread would likely remain intact, but it's impossible to predict now.
And the, the outcome of that could be that the Milton standalone option would become even more costly?
Hypothetically speaking, and, and again, a big question there is to what extent you can keep that part-time mix going and, and not have to go up a little bit?
When you looked at the ambulance expenses, was that that's just based on call reimbursement? It's not based on increasing our income through any other service options?
Correct, Larry, and that's a great point, too. Again, we, we did not look at what you might do as a standalone department to try to increase your revenues in, in, in any ways. So we essentially assumed your existing charge structure for your ambulance runs, but the revenue being cut, not quite in half, because I think your, your proportion of calls is slightly higher than half, but basically, we took a look and worked with Dan and, and reduced it. It was a guess, but I think it was an accurate guess. But that does assume that stays the same. I don't know what we're, what you would have to raise that, but that could be one option
Dan?
I know Rob touched on it several times, and I just want to reiterate, you know, these are year-one costs. When we discussed this with, with the Fire Commission back in December, and other conversations that we've had as staff, and leave other conversations we've had at the council level looking at the different things, we were always taking a five-year average, partially because the, as Rob alluded to, the union contracts in Janesville, and even the City of Milton police contracts have significant increases that year, between years two and three, and four and five. And so, that was one of the reasons why I had reiterated many times in the last six to eight months, this is a five-year average. Obviously, we didn't ask the Policy Forum to do that deep dive, but I don't want people to see these numbers and assume if we were to go with any one of these options, that is the magic number. There is still additional vetting that needs to happen with each one of these scenarios.
So that would be, I just want to make sure that I understand you. That would be the case regardless of any model that we would choose, that these are initial costs, and it's not going to be static?
Correct. And anytime you're talking like a referendum, you have to take a longer approach than just a one-year approach, because you don't want to have to do a referendum every year, because that gets complicated and burdensome, and a lot of other things, including expenditure restraint and other things that we have to contend with. So we have to take that holistic approach of a multi-year looking period, I guess.
And that's, if you remember back to some of the conversations we had last summer at the Fire Commission level, in, you know, at one point, it was the, the, the two models, the standalone versus the consolidation model were side by side, and I think the point was brought up, that, you know, consolidation was considerably cheaper on the onset, but by the time you hit the year five, they're almost the same. And the reason being is, the consolidation model took into account the Janesville pay scale, whereas the standalone model pretty much just left our pay scale static. So, as Rob has pointed out, and Dan has pointed out, Bill has pointed out, if we keep our pay scale static, we will have inevitability of churn internal. And that's, some level of that is okay. You know, certainly not all of us, you know, I don't make what the city manager of Janesville makes, Dan doesn't make what the finance director makes, Chief Mark Ward doesn't make what Chief Moore makes, but, so we understand, we're a smaller community, you can't be apples to apples all the time. But with a situation like fire and EMS provision, with the number of staff, if you are dramatically less in pay than they are, then it's going to be, you, you know, you're, you're never going to have more than a one- or two-year firefighter or paramedic at any time, because naturally, they're going to want to move to where the dollars are considerably more. It's not a matter of, oh, Milton pays, you know, 15, and Janesville pays 16, 25, it's, you know, Milton pays 15, and Janesville pays 28, you know, that's a big difference. And it comes down to level of service, we've been talking about it at the Fire Commission for years now, you know, this is my seventh year here, it's, that's been kind of the backbone of all conversations. What level of fire service and EMS service do the citizens of Milton, the City of Milton expect? Chief Banker, you know, asked that question probably 200 times to the Fire Commission. It comes down to what level of service do the citizens of the City of Milton expect? And the citizens of the Town of Harmony, and the Town of Milton, and the Town of Johnstone, they may have a different perspective. It doesn't mean that one is right, and it doesn't mean that one is wrong, they both can be simultaneously right. The expectation of level of service of the townships can be very different than what it is in the city. That's okay, same goes for snowplowing, same goes for police service, same goes for the weed commissioner, it's okay. You know, those two things can exist at the same time and be the same amount of correctness. So it just comes down, if we're having this conversation from the city's perspective, what do the voters and the taxpayers of the City of Milton expect for a level of service? Is four minutes the expectations of, of response time, or eight minutes, or 15 minutes? You know, I mean, that's why I think there's a lot of conversations yet to happen, but that's, you know, what I hear from folks, and I hear people say, ah, if I have a heart attack, what does it matter if they show up in eight minutes or 80 minutes, I'm dead anyways? That's a perspective. But, you know, is that the general perspective of a community that is close in an urban area, that has large-scale manufacturing, that has a chemical plant on the other side of town, that has almost all of the schools for the school district within our civil division boundary, that has two senior living facilities, that has the sports complex that all of our townships congregate at? Those are all things that happen in our city that we pay taxes for, and there's an expectation that those assets, and those facilities are going to be protected with a reasonable amount of service, and a reasonable amount of staff, or response time. It's just a different perspective, nobody's wrong, and nobody's, everybody can be right.
I do have one question. It seems even different when, now with the labor market than maybe when we first started talking to you, and just based on the municipalities that you've worked with, in, in your professional opinion and experience, is it going to get more difficult with the tight labor market to, to get people interested, whether it's full-time, or paid-on-call, or any other staffing model, just given the labor shortage that we have that seems to be ongoing?
I would think the answer is yes, and, and again, that's a consideration. I mean, I could be up here saying to you, if you're going to stand alone, you should really go to all full-time staff, because, you know, the part-time situation is just going to become impossible, but even for full-time staff, I think, given this labor market, so, so I don't know, I, again, without having any expertise on this, I would think that yes. But on the part-time one, it's not just, you know, the fact that we have such low unemployment rates, it's when you think about when the majority of calls come in, so the heaviest call volume is during weekday daytime hours. And that's where it is increasingly difficult to have volunteers, part-timers, who are able to get away from work, or get away from whatever they're doing during the day, and respond to a call. That's what we are seeing across the board. The rosters maybe even haven't diminished, they're staying the same size. It's the availability of people during those hours when you need them most. And I know one of the things you have done, I, I believe that's why you went more from POC to POP, was in part because of that issue. to POP, was in part because of that issue, and that can help solve it. But still, finding those part-time staff who are going to be able to be around during the daytime. Now, one thing that some other small communities have done is used other state staff. So, you know, maybe they have a couple of members of their Department of Public Works who are trained to be firefighters and paramedics, or at least right nearby. And, you know, it means that, you know, the boss's approval to go respond to the call is coming from somebody who's a city employee. And so, you know, I have no idea if that's something that you could look at here. And, you know, that would help a little bit, maybe. I don't know if it would solve the problem. So again, there are things you could look at. But I think, Mayor, the answer to both of your questions is yes, this is likely to continue to grow more difficult, at least based on.
Anything else for anybody as far as questions go? Okay, comments? Thank you very much. Please don't leave right away.
Just let us.
You have to get home with the box.
Just give us a wave when you're ready to take off. Brian, did you want to say make a comment?
Sure. I'm Brian Meyer, I'm Chair for the Town of Milton. The town really greatly appreciates the city's efforts and giving an independent perspective of our current situation for fire and EMS services and a look at long-term coverage as well. So we appreciate that greatly. I want to make that a strong point, and it's a serious point as well. Was hoping that the chief would be here. I realize the city of Janesville has opted out of its center government agreement for providing the chief, but some of these options in this discussion revolves around potential future discussion and negotiations with the city of Janesville with potential contracts. So I think it would have been valuable for him to attend, but the mayor and I have earlier this year had talks with the city of Janesville, looking at consolidation draft contracts. And during those discussions and negotiating language in the documents, I have found, and maybe the mayor has some insight on this as well, but that the type of service, in other words, maybe the equipment, maybe the staffing models were negotiable to some extent, but the costs were not negotiable. To the extent that if by their opinion or findings, they found that the costs at the end of the year were inequitable, they would notify us to make up for it and give us an invoice at the end of any fiscal year. Now, they may make a very strong, fair point that they don't want any service model to cost their citizens, their taxpayers. And so that's a fair perspective on their part, but the reality is that the costs were not negotiable. And for those reasons, and this report acknowledges that there's a lot of assumptions being made. One of them is that these things are negotiable. So I have some concern about the reality of that. There was also a comment made that there's an assumption that you're independently, your calls for services out of the department would be cut in half. I would caution whether that's an accurate statement. I think you may find that it won't be quite cut in half. But that's here nor there for us, but something I think you should consider. That's pretty much all I have on comments. I do appreciate the invite for this and the report and the efforts made. If there's any questions of me, you can certainly ask, but thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have any comments? Yep. Test, do you want to go next?
I can, sure.
And then Chris.
For all of you who don't know me, I'm Jeff Klins, I'm the Town Chair for the Town of Harmony. I'm kind of new to the political aspect. I was in law enforcement for over 30 years. And while there's a lot of politics in that, I'm learning quite a bit about our governments. When I first came aware of this, I was kind of surprised, started listening to the Fire Commission meetings between the city and the town of Milton. And I guess I was a little disappointed with the way things seemed to be going. But once I realized that we were going to be facing a big issue, I myself contacted the chief of the fire department for the city of Janesville and asked if they would be able to cover more of the town of Harmony's fire problems. Just for your information, the city of Milton, the town of Milton Fire Department covers roughly 80% of the town of Harmony, and the city of Janesville covers the remaining 20%. I was told by the chief that under no circumstances, the city of Janesville would be able to recover or to cover anything further for the town of Milton or the town of Harmony. And the reasoning was that they didn't have enough manpower or equipment. That it would just be too costly. So I, you know, I started paying more and more attention. Eventually, I approached Brian, and then I approached the Edgerton Fire District to see if they might be able to help the town of Harmony out. And I don't know if they're going to be able to, we're looking at various options. But one thing that I think I would ask that you guys take a look at is, I realize this report, you know, is a very good report, but I do think, and I have to agree with Brian, that there's a lot of missing things in there in regards to the actual costs. It seems like eventually, the fire chief for the city of Janesville told me that if in fact, we would want them to cover more of Harmony Township, that a new fire department would have to be built, equipment would have to be bought, and manpower would have to be increased, and that the town of Harmony would have to pay for that, that it wasn't going to cost the taxpayers of the city of Janesville anything. So take that into consideration. I think while this report shows a lot of comparisons and stuff, I think there's a lot of things that are that are missing. I agree with Al in regards to the citizens wanting to have a particular type of fire service. And I would have to agree that the city of city residents probably have a different idea in regards to response time and stuff than people who are living out in the township or in the country. I lived in the country for many, many years, and I just understood that if I had a heart attack or if I had a fire at my house, it was going to take longer to get help. So even though it might not be what the city of Milton residents want, I think we can all agree that everybody wants somebody there when they're having a heart attack or if their house is on fire. And I hope that we can all come together and come up with a good service. That's probably all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
I just want to make make a couple of comments. For those of you that don't mean don't know me, Chris Lucas, I'm a battalion chief on both the Milton and Janesville Fire Department. Biggest thing is I think the report was great. I was glad that when I heard the city was going to bring in the Wisconsin policy forum, I think that was a good move. I think the report tells us a lot of things that we already knew. I'm not going to, you know, there's things in there that I agree 100% with, some things I don't agree with, and that's, that's fine. The one thing I would say is what it didn't address, and then I would caution everybody on is, back when we started the shared services and everything else, my biggest fear was everybody would look at that as, okay, we've got shared services, a shared fire chief, all of our problems are solved. And it seemed like that's kind of what people were feeling. And it wasn't the silver bullet as, as we've talked about, my concern about this from both departments, and I can't speak for the fire chief, I'm not speaking for the fire chief, is the call out. The resources of Janesville are stretched, the resources of Milton are stretched. This, you know, we might have to do away with all of it and things like that. I don't see that happening, because both communities are benefiting tremendously from that agreement. You might not, you might not know it, and you may not realize it, but your ambulance is in Janesville a lot. It's almost an equal trade in terms of as many times as we help them out on ambulance calls, you know, we get the, we get the payback with a fire. As far as communities relying on their neighbors, there isn't a community in the county, there isn't a community in the area that doesn't rely on their neighbors. We're all going to each other's fault calls, we're all going to each other's fires, helping each other out on the ambulance. We've had two major incidents on the interstate in the last few days. We've had Edgerton was there, Milton was there, Janesville was there, all working together. So that, I don't ever see that going away. There's just not a community in the, in the area, even the bigger ones, that can survive without the help from even the smaller agencies. I do support full-time people in the station. I'd support as many full-time people as you could put in those stations. You won't find anybody in this room that's struggled with the scheduling and those challenges more than these three and me. So I will go ahead and say that I would like to see some good discussion. I really, I would really like to see the town and the city come back together and even get some of the fire departments that are involved, get some discussion, and let's, you know, let's talk about this, let's see where we can go. You know, I think one of the points that the report's trying to drive home is that communities need to work together and help each other out. And, you know, if two can do it, why not three, why not four? You know, let's, let's, let's everybody take a deep breath, let's really look hard at this, let's, everybody sit back down at the table, and maybe it won't work out. You know, maybe people want different things, and that's fine. But I think that we were, we started out moving in a good direction, it kind of broke apart. I would really like to see everybody sit back down at the table and maybe move forward and at least just have another conversation. But appreciate the opportunity to speak, thanks for the report. That's all I want to say.
Thanks, Chris. Anything for anyone else before we move on to the next portion of the meeting, which will just be a second or two before we get that set up? And we are willing, we continually are open to new ideas, new suggestions, any meetings. I think if we wanted to throw in the towel, we would have given our notice to dissolve the agreement with the town of Milton on June 30th. I think they would have done the same thing for us. So that did not happen. So I don't think any, anybody, and I can't speak for everybody, but I don't think anybody from the city has closed any doors on anything. Thanks. Ready?
Yeah. Yeah, my presentation's not going to be nearly as engaging, it's filled with numbers as Rob's was, but I appreciate that. Mine is just really going to be kind of setting the table for what in the world comes next. We saw the presentation, as Deputy Chief Lucas pointed out, there wasn't anything in there that was earth-shattering, there wasn't anything in there that, you know, not that we hadn't really anticipated. But it begs the question, where do we go from here? So just wanted to talk about, sorry, that's so small for people in the audience, just kind of want to talk about, you know, what are our options? Do we consolidate or do we stand alone? And how do we determine the best option? That's going to be the most difficult part of this conversation. What, how do we make that determination? Do we discuss pros and cons? Are there alternatives within the standalone option? Are there alternatives within the consolidation model? And then, you know, the big thing with this all comes down to is dollars. How do we fund it? The next available opportunity for a referendum for the city of Milton would be February of next year, but what I put here is April. Does that make sense? Those are all conversations we're going to have to have. There's a timeline that comes from state statutes that dictates how referendums happen, when they could happen, what they could say, what they can't say. So those, we've got our work cut out for us in the next, you know, six to eight months. Next steps? Talked about having public listening sessions, we've been talking about that since last fall. I think it's, it's long overdue that we start to have those conversations. We can call them workshops, we can call them listening sessions, we can call them town halls, charrettes, whatever it is. I think it's time that we kind of convene that type of community-wide conversation. We need to choose a preferred model, and we need to do that sooner rather than later. We kicked around with it at the Fire Commission level for nine months, votes were taken, and then it all came undone. We can't afford to do that again. We have to choose a model, because time is ticking. As Brian Meyer pointed out, Janesville Shared Services ends at the end of this year. 2022 is the great unknown. We need to draft referendum language in September or October of this year. We need to approve that referendum language in December or January of next year, and then hold a 2022 referendum. That's. There's a lot of unknowns we've talked about, many of us have talked about, what are the intentions of the towns? That's a huge piece of this. We've talked about consolidation, talked about regrouping, we've tried to have conversations over the last couple of months. What, what is, what is happening? Will Janesville participate in a shared services under a different, under different conditions? They've told us that the shared services are done under the current conditions, but we've had conversations about continuing shared services under different arrangements. Is that something we want to pursue? How and if and when will the Milton Fire Joint, or Milton Joint Fire District dissolve? Per the bylaws, we would need to make that decision by June 30th of next year in order to be effectuated on 1-1-2023. So we'll have to figure out what happens if and when that happens. How will the existing capital be allocated? We've talked about that a number of occasions tonight. You know, that's as much of an interest as ours as it is for whatever the towns end up doing. We have 50/50 ownership, is it a 50/50 split? And if so, who gets what? Who gets to keep the dog? Not really sure. Want to figure that out. But I think the biggest question, at least from our perspective, from city staff, we have to figure out what 2022 is going to look like. We know we don't have a chief. Is the fire department going to dissolve? We have no idea. And if so, when is it going to happen? But we have to prepare a budget in about three months to cover 2022. And we have, there's been zero discussions about what that's going to look like. We know we don't have a chief, but that's about it. That's the only known thing at this time. Janesville has offered the contract with us on January 1st of next year. We know we can't do that, because we can't pass a referendum in time to fund that model. So Milton Joint Fire District or Commission, from what I see and what we've discussed, will exist in 2022. What it's going to look like? No clue. So we've got a lot of things that'll happen between now and then. But I think the key piece is, we have to pick a model. Kicked it around for over a year now. I think we made a presentation on June 20th of last year to the Fire Commission. It's now July 6th.
Well, and I think for me, one of the most important aspects is to have community feedback. The city of Milton residents need to have an opportunity to have their questions answered. Obviously, not everybody can come to the meetings, not everybody can sign onto Zoom. So we are definitely going to be having question and answers, town hall meetings, and getting input and feedback from our residents to help guide us to what model they would like to see for the city of Milton. And I know that our Fire Commission will be meeting and discussing what 2022 looks like, and, you know, that has to be figured out. It will all be figured out sooner rather than later, because time is of the essence. But we have, we have different objectives. different objective reports to look at. We have lots of more conversations that we can have. And it's always in everybody's best interest to have those conversations and determine a path forward, whatever that looks like for everybody. Everybody deserves to have the fire EMS services that their residents and their communities and towns want and can afford. So anything else for anyone else?
Yep. Just to say that tentatively, we're looking at Wednesday, July 14th at 6:00 PM for a fire commission meeting here at City Hall.
And Larry?
Excuse me, what time do you want to do that?
6:00 PM. And that will be, will meet here, but it will also, I don't know.
If this worked tonight.
We'll try to do it then.
Yes.
We will get lucky twice.
Or it'll be better, one of the two.
For sure here. So that we have that option.
Simple, simple message. A host divided cannot stand. And I truly believe that. I resonate with what Chris was talking about. I think we need to, we definitely need to do what Al mentioned, we, and the mayor. We need to look at what we're going to do the rest of this year and 2022. But I really advocate some kind of a that discussion, task force, whatever you want to call it, where everyone sits down and figures out what's going to happen after 2022. Because, you know, we need to work together. There's only so many people getting trained in EMS and so many people willing to be trained in EMS. And there's only so many people willing to be a firefighter and trained in that area. And there's ongoing training clause, an ongoing commitment of training hours for these people when they work for the city or where they work for. And the most important thing is, we don't want to be cannibalizing from each other. I don't want to be sitting up here two years from now going, well, we got to raise our rates because so and so raised their rates and so and so's got their rates up. And what you're going to do is rob Peter to pay Paul. And in the end, the people that are going to pay the price are the citizens, the taxpayers, the people that are counting on fire service and EMS service. Thank you.
Anything for anybody else?
Yes, I would just like to say I'm really happy that everybody came out today to hear this presentation. I, I, I know I personally for a long time have been saying, we need to talk about this. Everybody needs to figure out how we're going to do this. And our commission has researched and studied and we've done a lot of things to keep things going. Our department people are all super people. They deserve a lot more than what we have been able to give them thus far. I truly believe that. I'm hoping that this meeting, that we can actually do that, maybe before the end of the month so that, you know, all of our towns can, we can all just talk about where we're at before we go to those last minute things in September, October, November and December. Because we all have budgets, as Al pointed out. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you come to the mic? Because that's what's going into the Zoom.
Yeah, I appreciate you scheduling a meeting for the 14th. There's a couple of people in the room that might have a commitment on the 14th already. So we might have to communicate on whether that's true or not. Just FYI, we'll kind of confirm that.
Okay. Do, please do. Yes. Yeah, let me know.
I just want to say thank you to everyone tonight. Also, it was nice to see so many people in person. It was nice to see so many people on the Zoom meeting. We're going to shoot for a listening session next Tuesday, July 13th at 6:00 PM here. So look for notice and confirmation of that. So you're all welcome to come back and talk more fire and EMS and that's. So please stay tuned. Call if you have questions or comments. Again, we're willing to meet and discuss with anybody and we hope to see some of you back here next Tuesday. And thank you, Rob, for, for driving here and giving us that presentation, all the work you and David did. And we appreciate that so much and we appreciate everybody coming tonight. Thank you. So look for possibly a listening session next Tuesday, a formal council meeting July 20th. Am I missing anything in general?
Yeah, I was just scrolling at the fire commission meeting.
Yes.
And Brian, I don't know if you knew, but Chief Rhodes is down in Miami. That's why he's not here. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. I was going to say something. Yep. All right.
He's on vacation. Not at all.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? We're now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.